On Monday, March the eighteenth, twenty twenty four, and I called a Yelm Planning Commission meeting to order. Chef, would you please make a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Carlos Perez. Commissioner Bob Howard. Commissioner John Graver. Commissioner Richard Lumsdale. Commissioner Ann Warman. Commissioner David Johnstone. And Commissioner Austin Walker.
Thank you, Hazel. Would you please stand for the political allegiance?
I believe that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seemed on to item number four. Which is the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the attached minutes?
Yes, well, I wasn't here, so I can't offer a motion.
Very well, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
Seconded and approved, minutes were approved from the last meeting. Agenda item number five. Are there any staff communications?
Uh, just a few. First of all, I want to welcome our two new planning commissioners, David Johnstone and Austin Walker. We're working with you and to congratulate our returning planning commissioner, Ann Warman. Um, I did bring a certificate for Jerry. I didn't know if he would be attending tonight or not, but it looks like not, but I will make sure that a certificate appreciation gets to him. And other than that, um, we will start. We are gonna start seeing more things coming in related to our comp plan update. Our consultant has been working on basically evaluate, they're doing what they call existing conditions memos. Which is basically evaluating our old comp plan and some of our other plans to sort of identify areas where there may be some weaknesses or gaps or things like that. So that'll be kind of how we start picking off the comp plan update. So, more to come. That's all I have for this portion of the agenda.
All right, moving on to item, agenda item number six, public comments. If anyone in the audience would desire to address the commission, our comments are limited to three minutes. And a minimum, a maximum of five speakers. But the comments on matters that are listed on the agenda are welcome. And if there's anyone who wants to comment, please come to the podium and then state your name and address for the record. Do I have anyone? Very well. We move on to agenda item number seven. Is there any unfinished business, staff? Very well, we move on to item number eight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you did that already, did we not?
New business.
Well, we didn't, no, we didn't, new business, that's new business.
A couple of things, uh, in number eight. One, I was thinking that, um, it might be nice. Um, especially as we do have some new commissioners to sort of dedicate it just like maybe five, ten minutes of our meetings to some sort of a. Uh, I'm gonna call it infotainment, um, just some stuff, uh, related into pan planning stuff in general. And one of the, um, things that we have been seeing happen across the state really. Cities and basically are starting to take a harder look at their parking code requirements. And in particular, they started to, um. Look at allowing some reduction in parking space requirements, especially if it's tied into providing affordable housing or some other things that benefit the community. And but it's for two reasons, one, parking takes up a lot of space and two, it's really expensive to build. I know Lacy did a study a couple of years ago that showed, you know, just surface parking per space is usually about fifteen thousand per space. And if you're doing structured parking, like a parking garage, it's anywhere between thirty to fifty thousand per space that you provide. So that's obviously a big hit when you're trying to figure out a way to build affordable house. So it's been, it's sort of, it's in flux, but like Olympia, for example, has some areas now where. They don't require any parking at all, they let the market decide how many spaces to provide. And of course, it's gonna be different from Yelm, as Andrew and I have discussed, you know, um, you need. Access to public transportation and other things in certain areas where, when you are going to be reducing parking. So it'll be a different kind of conversation for us, but I just wanted to show this little video to kind of show you what, what, um, some of the theories are behind parking reductions.
Before you go under, that fifteen and thirty thousand dollar cost, is that cost that for construction or loss of, of, uh, of building funding for other things?
It's the actual cost of building the space and the travel lanes and all the other things that are associated with parking. So of course you have the space, but you also have to have the space to move cars around and that kind of a thing. Yeah, so we're gonna show, uh, show this little video and then after I'm done. After we're done looking at that, I'm kind of gonna hand it over to Andrew, who's got another presentation to discuss some changes we're looking at for one of our commercial districts.
And we've come up with a, a design that puts twelve thousand people in one building.
Four months before he died in two thousand eleven, Steve Jobs made his final public appearance, pitching Apple's new campus, which opened this year. Central to his vision was turning existing parking lots into a green landscape.
The overall feeling of the place is gonna be a zillion times better than it is now with all the asphalt. So we'd like to plant a lot of trees, including some apricot orchards.
But Jobs didn't mention that the new parking structure on campus would have more floor space than the office building. That's because it wasn't Apple's plan. The decision came from the city of Cupertino, which demanded eleven thousand parking spots for the campus. But Cupertino is hardly unique. It's estimated that in America, there are eight parking spots for every car, covering up to thirty percent of our cities. And collectively taking up about as much space as the state of West Virginia. The more parking we have, the more we're able to drive. So the rules that manage our parking not only influence the way we move around, but also shape our urban landscapes.
If you look at pictures of the American cities around nineteen twenty and nineteen thirty, all of the curbs are just completely filled with parked cars. And they couldn't use prices to manage demand because the parking meter wasn't even invented until nineteen thirty-five.
This is Donald Shoup, an urban planning professor at University of California, Los Angeles, whose specialty is parking. As cars filled cities in the early twentieth century, two inventions came to dominate parking management throughout the United States. The first was the parking meter.
The meter manufacturers popularized the parking meters, they offered them free to cities and they kept the revenue. Until the meter was paid for in about six months and then the city got all the revenue. They offered to install them on one side of the street only, so people could see how it worked on one side and how it worked on the other. At the same time the parking meter was invented, cities invented the idea of off-street parking requirements.
Off-street parking requirements, also known as mandatory parking minimums, are the second invention. And though you may not be aware of them, most of the parking lots you're used to exist because of these rules in the background.
Look at any place from the air, any suburban place from the air, you'll see an awful lot of land taken up for parking. And most people don't know why, it's our policy that we require our cities to be built with a lot of parking.
With suburbanization after World War Two, off-street parking requirements became popular with city governments. They forced developers to include parking for their new buildings, which created a huge supply of parking at no cost to the city.
Off-street parking requirements really spread throughout the United States faster than almost any other urban planning invention. They arose partly because of the lack of management of on-street parking. If you can't manage the on-street parking properly, you need off-street parking requirements, or everybody will say, how did you let this building be built when there's not enough parking?
A typical requirement looks like this, for every one thousand square feet of new building, there has to be a set number of parking spots, which varies by land use.
You have to have a parking spaces per something, it could be the number of spaces per bassinet in a hospital. Or per holes at a golf course, or per thousand gallons of water in a swimming pool. One of the oddest ones is for a funeral home, because that's sort of the, you know, parking spaces per what?
An average parking spot requires about three hundred and thirty square feet, which includes car storage and empty space, allowing the car to move in and out and for doors to open. That means if a policy requires three spots per thousand square feet, the parking lot needs to be the size of the building. And many parking requirements need more spots, a restaurant may need ten spots per thousand square feet, making the parking lot over three times larger than the restaurant.
Planners don't have any training in how to set them, really no way to say how much parking every building needs. So it's a pseudoscience that has grown up, it's like, like, like bloodletting, you know, which was a major form of medical treatment for a couple thousand years. And they look just like parking requirements today.
Building parking is expensive, especially when it involves a large construction project.
We pay for the, the free parking that we demand in every role we have in life other than as a driver. As a taxpayer, as a resident, as a shopper. And just because you pay nothing at the parking lot at the grocery store, doesn't mean the cost goes away. It's still there, it's just that the driver isn't paying for it.
Developers who don't comply with parking requirements pay tens of thousands of dollars in fees for every spot that they don't include. A lot of times, these costs prohibit new development.
This is the most valuable land on earth, land is expensive for, for housing, but it's free for parking, and you wonder why we have a problem?
Parking requirements often result in more parking space than building space, pushing buildings further apart from each other, making it harder to walk and encouraging more driving. Many of the dense cities that we love, like Paris or Washington DC or Amsterdam or New York, wouldn't look like this with parking requirements. These arbitrary rules continue to shape the growth of our cities and increase traffic congestion. But the excessive amount of land dedicated to parking is able to be repurposed.
We have terrific opportunity to convert underused parking lots into housing where people want to live. The upside is that we have a lot of benefits to, uh, to reap from changing our policies. Well, to boil an eight hundred page book down into three bullet points, uh, I have three basic recommendations. Remove all street parking requirements, charge the right price for on-street parking, by which I mean the lowest price the city can charge. And still have one or two open spaces on every block, so nobody can say there's a shortage of parking. In order to, to reach that price, you have to vary it by location and, and time of day. But once you've done that, make it politically popular and spend the revenue on public services on the meter streets. Well, I'm worn out.
So, that's just food for thought, um, we'll be looking at some of those issues. Down the road, potentially even in this zone that Andrew's gonna discuss today, so.
Just, um, I bring up the thing real quick, you know, because you had mentioned Olympia and, uh. Uh, I was down there the other day trying to find, even though it is all charged. Um, I finally get a space and then realized, no, I don't have to change. And I'm not taking my credit card, sorry, I don't take my credit card out and just scan it willy-nilly every single place I want, I won't do that, you know? So I decided, the heck with it, I'm not gonna go shop this one place, and then I started driving it and. Even with all of these cars there, there was all these boarded up stores. And I'm thinking, if those stores were all in operation, where would all the cars go? You know, so I, I, you know, I, you know, this, I, I see the idea is very simplistic.
Well, this one thing for sure, it would sure, we, uh, cause us to rethink about how we. Think about buying automobiles and having automobiles instead of public transportation and obviously all of Europe previous to, you know, World War Two. You've got these, you know, and then in New York, you get the brown houses and all that stuff, the brownstone places and all. So I can see, but that would take a, I think it's gonna take some kind of an evolvement.
I think, and, and so in Olympia, for example, they have made some of these changes. And they're usually tied to having, being within a quarter mile of, uh, rapid transit, uh, those kinds of things. Where they connect them again, you know, Yelm just has one bus route in and out of town, but, um. But it is good food for thought from the standpoint of when we also have a housing shortage and what we're using our space for, and so there's that too.
And then also, if you want to take a look, um, you don't have to drive very far, but, uh, it's the duplexes that they put over there behind, uh. Past the golf course. And you can drive through that, it's just a small duplex area. You can drive through there during the afternoon when people are at work. And it's congested, I mean, there's people parked all over the street, I, I don't know what it's like when people try and come home and park, I don't know where to park, you know? So I, I'm just saying, you know, I, I don't like parking and I'd sure like to see a wonderful, uh, you know, alternative. But I, I just see we're kind of small to be putting a train in or, you know, you know, more buses or anything else, you know?
Uh, I guess one last thing I will say on it, are there are some, uh, very limited situations where the state is now requiring cities to also reduce certain parking requirements? But it's for, I'd have to look it up again, but it's for things like senior living facilities that are within. Range of transit, certain types of living situations. So we'll, we'll probably at least see a little bit of that, but I get your point about parking in general, it's, it's really controversial. I mean Olympia made these changes last year. And, um, they got a lot of pushback and as I was telling Andrew, Olympia's got. A lot of neighborhood associations that are really involved with the city, they have their own meetings and such, and so the neighborhoods. Generally oppose this kind of thing, because they think it means that people are gonna start parking, you know, in their subdivision, so.
Catch twenty-two sort of thing, because.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, all of my children, I and my grandchildren have cars, one family has, there's five, six cars. So, you know, so that's part of the reason you see, you see cars.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's going to work, and children still have their cars there, so the whole mindset has got to be changed for this to, you know, take footholds and take a foothold and go forward. I mean, I, I like it, I like the idea, but public transportation is great, I mean. How often, you know, you go to New York, you don't need to have a car.
Paris, Paris is awesome, but.
In our ear. All right.
Well, I'm gonna hand it over to Andrew, for the discussion.
All right, um. My name is Drew Kohler, I'm the assistant planner here, um, welcome David and Austin to the planning commissions, again, welcome back, Ann. Um, we talked about this a few months ago for the potential changes or updates to the central business district. You know, for the commissioners that were not here, um, we're gonna kind of go back and look at it again, um, introduce it basically as a brand, you know, as we did a couple of months ago. Um, so with that, uh, we have a couple of commercial zoning districts in Yelm. Um, there's the CBD, where is your, I mean, that's the downtown core, um, then you have, uh, C one, or virtual one. You can see my. Thing here, up in the top right there, where you have, uh, TAD's agency in the five oh seven tap room and, and businesses like that. And then you have the C two district, which is more, um, you know, it's, it's heavier commercial, so you see tractors, um. A lot of times gas stations, tractor supply, that's kind of the C two zone, and then C three is the large lot commercial, so Walmart, um. Style Costco, um, big lot commercial. Um, and then going deeper into the CBD, um, the permitted uses, retail establishments, service oriented establishments. Uh, mixed use developments, which I'll touch on, uh, in a little bit here. Um, public safety and emergency response facilities, um, and attached and co-located wireless communication facilities. Um, and special uses. Uh, child daycare centers, nurseries, preschools, cemeteries, funeral homes, um. Unvalescent care facilities, assisted living facilities, congregate care facilities, senior centers, freestanding wireless communication facilities, and. Uh, churches or places of worship. This map here shows the CBD, um, it is a little, I drew it a little bit wrong, because it's the ball fields of, uh. You know, Yelm Middle School here, um, but this is a pretty close to. An outline of how far the CBD extends. And we've heard from a, a number of people, um, that there are some development challenges, um, for commercial and mixed use in the CBD. That being a, a lot of those. A lot of the area in the CBD is currently residential, um, the duplexes, as John was saying, um. Earlier, you know, that's, that's also in the CBD, um, and when we had, we had Tim first. Uh, come in a couple of months ago and, and describe a couple of challenges he's facing. Um, they're mainly, um, tied to the size of the lots, uh, most of them are between point one five and point two five acres. Uh, and the lot, that lot size tends to be restricted to mixed use developments. Um, regarding density, which is between, in the CBD for mixed use would be twenty to seven, twenty units to thirty-two units per acre. Um, and that density requirement in conjunction with parking requirements, um, has made it. A little bit difficult to get the mixed use that we want, um. And going into mixed use developments, there's a good example of, uh, Trapper Sushi, uh, I love Trapper Sushi, but, uh. They're on, I think this is Sixth and Alder in Zepoma. Um, where they have a commercial building or a commercial use on the base, on the bottom floor and then apartments above it. You know, it's one of those things that we would love to see come to Yelm, um, you know, one, it offers commercial and two, it helps with the, the housing need that we, that we need, that we have. The, again, the issue is, we haven't had really any proposal that, uh, has found it feasible. We had one a few years ago, um, on Yelm Avenue, but they ran into the issue of, um, you know, wanting to provide roughly sixty units. Um, but only had room for about forty parking stalls. So there, you know, there is a. A conflict just in the lot size and, and what we want to see there, um. So with the, um, definition of mixed use. Um, it, based on our, this is from our Yelm municipal code. Uh, mixed use development encourages imaginative design and the creation of open space and development. By preserving or creating environmental amenities superior to those generally found in conventional developments. And preserves the greater, and preserves to the greatest extent the natural characteristics of the land. Encourages development of affordable housing and establishes a method for utilizing potential zone, uh. Potential zone properties, um, with that twenty percent of the floor area needs to be commercial. Uh, and eighty percent would be residential. Um, that is, uh, a little bit flexible, it could be close to that, um, and then the density, density standard, um. For mixed use and any others, and any of the other commercial zones is sixteen, uh, in the CBD it's twenty to thirty-two. So we're looking, um, again, just kind of putting things on the table, throwing things at the wall, if you will. Um, add ideas to possibly encourage those mixed use developments, um. Or, um, you know, and then there's another one about a little bit more residential, so looking at parking, um. And the potential to reduce, uh, or potentially eliminate parking requirements in the CBD for, uh, affordable units in those mixed use buildings. Um, or provide mitigation additional, and that would be additional bicycle pedestrian facilities that encourage walking or biking. Um, so that could be bike, uh, bike racks, bike lockers, um, or doing something like a fee-in lieu of parking program. Um, we have the parking lot that's going right over here. Um, and potentially looking at making more parking areas like that, that could be shared between buildings and residential use.
Excuse me, Drew?
Yeah.
What does that fee and lieu parking mean? How, how, define that formula?
Yeah, so basically if you, if you have a. Mixed use building, so let's say a residential apartment building and it requires one parking space per, um, unit. That's not really what it is, but that's an easy comparison, because it's one to one, um, so if there's one per unit. And you had twenty units, you need twenty parking stalls, and if you provided fifteen parking stalls, you could create an impact fee. That would allow you to use fifteen stalls, but you'd have to pay, explain impact fee. For parking that would be required in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, all right, awesome, um. So in the residential side, um, there's also a. A possibility that we look into allowing multifamily, uh, duplexes or townhomes within the CBD. But not less than two blocks from a major, uh, or urban arterial. And less than a, to be determined amount, uh, of lot size, so, um. It's hard to throw out numbers, but it looks between, you know, point one five and point two to point two five acres. Um, that would need to be nailed down, but, um, we don't want duplexes on main, on, on Yelm Avenue. Um, but we do want to encourage housing and we want to make our downtown more walkable and, um, to make it more walkable, development needs to happen and. New multifamily and duplex townhomes come in, they have to put in sidewalks, so. That would, uh, also be a benefit because it makes that downtown four more walkable. Um, so with that, um, you know, uh, there's a potential of, you know, if, if we are interested, we could take a look at allowing those, uh, multifamily duplexes, townhomes. Um, and then the second one, um, would be regarding the, uh, density within the CBD and, um, taking a look at that and maybe. Um, not having a maximum density or maybe not having a minimum density or, or get rid of density requirement altogether. Um, but again, it's all kind of on the table and, uh, you know, at least taking a look at it and seeing where we can go.
The CBD, I thought we talked about that earlier.
Yeah, so when we, when we were looking at it the first time, um, we were thinking of, you know, possib. It was on the, realm of possibility of having like, how the commercial zones are listed, C one, C two, C three. Um, or having, uh, CBD one, CBD two. But it, after taking a look at it for a few months, um, it kind of occurred to us, okay, we, we could probably do that within the CBD. Uh, mostly as it's written, with a couple revisions, um, and we figured it would be more efficient to. Update some of the language in there than creating a whole another zoning district.
Richard has his hand raised, I think he wants to say something.
Yeah, how you doing, Andrew? In my opinion, I, I think we're definitely on the right track here, my main question would be on the CBD special uses is, uh, you've got cemetery. Listed for being in the, in the CBD. If, I mean, with that, with the amount of space the cemeteries require, um. I mean, would that be best use, you know, in the business district that, you know, we're trying to, you know, as you said, you know, we're trying to draw business. Into the central district of Yelm, and I don't think, you know, having a cemetery in the middle of it would probably be a good idea.
That's a good, uh, a good note, um. I, yeah, I, I don't know exactly, um, that's a good question, probably. I, yeah, I have, I don't know exactly, um, that's a good question, probably, and that could be another thing that we, uh, look into and. Um, possibly updating or changing.
Any further, Drew? Any questions, uh, from the commission or anyone on board?
Well, I really like the idea of the, um, the mixed use. If we can do something about reducing the parking requirements, just as the parking video talked about. And that is a, I. I think one of the more difficult things is to figure out, is there a way that the. That these, maybe these fees could be, um, used to, to help. With the cost of the city providing another parking lot that's used for major events or, you know, to. To help with the amount of parking that the city actually needs, and then people would, um, be able to park. If they're gonna have buildings that have residential above commercial in the first two blocks here, um. It seems like that you wouldn't necessarily wanna burden that with a lot of parking with one. So. Maybe it's a, um, it's something that could be a collaborative effort between. It wouldn't be owned by any of the developers, but the the developers provide a a fee to help to free the cost. Of providing that.
Yeah, and and other cities have done, um, the fee in lieu of parking requirement. Um, it's something that just came up very recently in in conversation, so we thought we would bring it here and. See if there is any, you know, any interest in that, um, we haven't pursued what that would even look like at this point. Um, but at least in theory, it seems to kind of check out. Um, where it reduces the sprawl and also provides a place for. A place like Yelm where our residents are heavily commuting, um, to other cities to work, so. Uh, kind of that balance of, um, balance of the two.
I'll type in on that, just, I mean, our fantasy for Yelm Avenue would be to have kind of like the, what's the Trappers, is that what you call?
Trapper sushi.
Yeah, I mean, something like that, where we've got a ground floor commercial all along Yelm Avenue with vertical residential. And I know that we've had conversations already with, uh, you know, somebody who would like to do a development similar to that, and. It was the density and the parking that were keep holding them back, and then, but the fee in lieu, like. Let's say there was a, you know, a development like next to the Habitat for Humanity place, and they, they did. Uh, a nice big, uh, residential development on top of commercial, and then. The city's got a parking lot that's going in there, that maybe over time could be a structured parking lot, that could be more than one level. And like the fantasy would be like, okay, you don't wanna provide your twenty spots, you only want fifteen, you pay us. To build those five spots in our lot. But we would need a concrete plan for that, because a fee in lieu program has to have an actual construction plan. For something, you know what I mean? So it might be something that we even build and then people pay us back for as we go. But something like that would be amazing if we could have low locations of satellite parking around the city where.
And you said that the, the one case where we had a proposal for a, a building that was gonna be mixed use. It was the parking requirement that created the. I need to drop that.
Yeah, and I, uh, I talked with him today before this meeting, um, and. His, his two points, and he, he really appreciated us as the city reaching out and, um, kind of revisiting this and. In our code, as it is, uh, in its current form, says parking requirements, um, in the, in the CBD and. It's not gonna be the exact language, um, but if, if. Parking requirements are not achievable onsite, you don't have to meet those as long as off-street. Uh, parking is available, um, which is. Could be, the stone could fall either way, you could have an argument saying there's not enough, or you could have an argument saying there's. Put, you know, plenty of parking on street that's available, um, so that was another one where, um. His, his message was. To get, um, you know, to bring that to fruition, the language could be a little bit stronger, was his recommendation.
Would you lay out for me or for us, what do you require to go through this process and get this done so that we could have something like that? We visited and maybe.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, obviously, we're just discussing it now, but, um, what we would do is actually draft the code changes. We bring them in here as proposed code change, um, like you've seen before, we would just pull what our current code is out. And then using track changes, which kind of shows what is either being deleted or added to that code. We bring it in, showing you what everything that we're proposing to change, um, that would be at the time that we would have a hearing. And at the hearing, you all would consider whether to recommend or not that these changes be approved by the city council. So your, your role is to recommend approval, um, you don't do, you don't have final approval, but you're the, you know, you're. The body that basically does most of the deliberation in the hearing, and then. We take your recognition to council, they may or may not. Accept your recognition, I, we have, um, the nine one yet, but, but I mean, they do have that option.
So considering that we are now discussing this, when could we expect that kind of, um. Procedure, that, that follow up?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't guarantee anything for the next meeting, but I mean, it could be over the next couple of months, just as we. I guess, uh, you know, we've got a ton of code changes that we're, you know, going to be doing. And you were granted to do that, but at the same time, that doesn't mean we can't, you know, on a parallel track, just be working for the. Uh, the department to make changes, so, um, there are other things we wanna look at still with the, the codes, whether it's like. Uh, facilities for bicycles, uh, other things that we need to start putting into our code. Uh, and some of that might be span across all the commercial zones too, so right now we're just looking at CBD. But some of these things might apply to all of them, so we're still just kind of evaluating. I would say the next thing you're probably likely to see would be, um, the stuff that our consultant is working on for the comp plan. Because they're supposed to be giving us those existing conditions memos next week. Um, your involvement at comp plan is gonna be very important.
All right. Any further discussion to questions? Very well, let's move on to agenda item number nine. It is, uh, four thirty six on, uh, March thirteenth. Hearing. Uh. When I say four thirty six. Today's hearing is on the proposed modifications to the Yelm Municipal Code, uh, open for public testimony. Uh, if there's anyone wishing to speak. This afternoon, uh, please flip on the wrist, your hand if you're. Or come to the podium, please name, uh, state your name and your address for the record. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Not online.
No, 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 not online, okay. Uh, being as how there's no questions from anyone, how about the commission, you have any ideas, any questions rather? Or, or testimony, well, that's Chris.
Uh, Christopher Carroll, building official, code enforcement officer for the city of Yelm, uh, good evening, calling the commission, welcome new members. What we're discussing tonight is, uh, single family residents recently diverted to an adult care facility. Now, what that means is eight, an eight bedroom facility with small quarters. Um, we're talking about a vulnerable population, you know, the residents of the twenty four dollar facility could be. Physically disabled or cognitively disabled, so we're asking that anytime we have a proposal like this, we've. Add language in our Yelm Municipal Code, but these facilities are required to be sprinkled. Um, sprinkler save lives, uh, not only for the residents and caretakers, but it's also an asset to the. Fire department and emergency personnel that show up, three o'clock in the morning into a smoke-filled building. And again, these quarters tend to be small, we're talking about bedrooms that could be as small as seven by ten. So, I mean, being able to eliminate that fire risk in its infancy, we'll just have immeasurable.
Any comments?
I have a question on this, um. I have to know how, how, uh, expensive adult care is, uh, and. Where, and there's not enough of it, uh, out there, would we be, um. Burdening the potential new facilities in such a way that, um, that, I mean. Would we require all the older facilities that, uh, care for adults to have this as well as the newer ones that come on? Um, my concern is it may de- deter, uh, you know, keep the people from moving toward having a. Another adult facility, when we really need more.
We would not, uh, implement retroactively, any new facilities, um, would be required. And just like you said, uh, this type of care is expensive, so those places are bringing in a good deal of money. So installing and operating and maintaining a fire sprinkler system would be a very small burden on such a process.
Well, is there some way that, um, it'd be delayed? To some point after they opened, uh, because when you're opening, that's when you're spending all your money. Before the money starts coming in, you know, and so, I, you know, I don't know what kind of shoestring people are doing if they're not building a new building. They're building a house, and they're, you know, separating out some of the living room and. You know, and trying to make these rooms, you know, into bedrooms, uh, it doesn't sound like, talk about people that have a whole lot of. Money in hand.
It would be the best time to make that conversion, um, when you're doing the remodel, to get that sprinkler system in there. And, uh, the one that we have in town that recently did this, does have other facilities in other cities. Absolutely.
So, but this is, uh, this is a requirement of licensed business that does adult care.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a residential necessarily, uh, let's just say, uh, oh, like, my taste. I have my house and my daughter lives with me, and if I got into a position where I couldn't no longer. Looking to care of myself, she's taking care of me, that doesn't address that.
No, not at all, these are residences that, you know, confirm to this, conform to the state definition of an adult care facility. The one we have in town has eight patients, so that's eight bedrooms.
There's a number of these, not like you.
So, yeah, if you built a brand new adult care facility, that would be a commercial development, and those sprinkler requirement would already be there. But if you're converting your single family residence into eight bedrooms to house people, have caretakers quarters. Um, that's when this would kick in, that's when this sprinkler requirement would be in place.
All right, any further questions?
Similar to what Gary was saying earlier, we're, we're kind of looking for your recommendation to take it before council and. And add that to our.
I, I would suspect that we require a motion to. Provide that recommendation, is that correct?
That was correct.
So I am putting forward, uh, I'm requesting a motion to do update chapter eighteen dot twenty two dot zero five zero. Of the Yelm Municipal Code, do I?
Make the motion.
Very well.
I'll second it.
Motion has been, uh, seconded, therefore it's approved, we recommend that you pass that on.
Okay.
Oh, oh, yes. So let's have a vote on this, all those in favor, uh, say yea.
Yea, yea.
All those opposed, hearing none, the motion is approved.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Close the hearing.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm getting to that page. All right, uh, hearing no further testimony or recommendations, please, uh, comments. I will close the hearing at four forty three, yes.
Oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt the closing of the hearing.
That's all right.
Um.
Forward, the hearing is closed, just Drew.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, just a procedural thing, so when we did the, uh, approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Yes.
We had a, a motion and a second, but there was no vote.
Mm-hmm. Oh, right, I'm telling you. So do I have to do this now?
We could go back.
Uh, if we go.
So I can do this.
Ask if, oh, just ask you every.
Just take, the motion's still open, we need to take.
Motion's still open, take a vote for the approval of the minutes, are everyone in, in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, hearing none, miniature approve.
Thank you.
All right, before I close the meeting, I would like to welcome our two new members. And if it's all right with the commission, I would like for us to just to give a little short, very short. Biographical thing of ourselves and who we are and why we're here, will we start with Austin?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, for the last, uh, ten years, I worked as a, as a carpenter up in King County. I relocated to Yelm about two years ago, I got injuries in the field that necessitated my retraining. Uh, for most of my career, I was involved in building housing that I would not consider affordable housing. And it is my interest to, uh, serve in the creation of that housing going forward.
Good, good.
My name is David Johnston, I've lived in Yelm since, uh, two thousand seventeen, uh, but I've lived in Thurston County my whole life. And I own a business that manufactures HVAC products.
Manufacturers what?
HVAC products.
My turn.
Your turn, Bob.
Well, I've been on the commission for a little over six years, uh, my background is, I am a custom home builder. Garage builder, remodeler, et cetera, uh, I've been in the trades for over forty five years of my life, so, uh. I've lived here in the Yelm community since nineteen eighty six, and I've raised my kids here. Graduated the Yelm school system, and they've moved on, uh, living very good lives, uh. They're also responsible for my grandchildren, I have seven grandchildren, and they're all starting to graduate through the Yelm. School system and, uh. Yeah, this has been my home and I'm here, so. Whatever it's worth, um, I'm here.
Uh, I'm Carlos Perez, I moved to Yelm about thirty three years ago to go to the Ranthas School. Uh, I have been a planner in my early years, uh, I worked for Southwestern Bell a long, long time ago in Texas. I'm originally from Texas, uh, lived here for, what now, thirty three years, thirty two years. Uh, actually, I don't actually live in Yelm, I lived right outside Yelm. Uh, my address is a Rainier address, but I'm just, just about, but the house next to me is in Yelm. So, uh, and I have appreciated working here with the commission, and this is the second time that I've worked with the commission. Uh, first time was in two thousand and five, a long time ago, uh, basically, that's it.
Well, um, I'm Ann Mormon and, um. Um, most of what I focus on, um, I think I should say how long I've been around, and I can't remember. I, uh, my family and I, we all moved here, um, in early nineties. Uh, bought some, uh, raw land, uh, on the river and, uh, built. And so we're right at the edge of the urban growth area, uh, and, um. Anyway, uh. To, um, and my interest is very keenly on how Yelm develops. Because, um, I'm also on the parks board, uh, parks commission committee. And, uh, and we're also doing our portion of the update, uh, for the, um. Uh, comprehensive plan, and that means looking at the population that's coming in and, uh, all the parks. That, uh, the population needs, uh, to be able to have, uh, a good community. Uh, and, uh, and I can tell you that that's, it's worked very well so far. Because looking at the checklist of what we proposed last time and the, and the parks plan, we've done those.
Yeah.
We've done the trails, we've got new trails, we've got a dog park that is starting up. Uh, we've got a, a stage out on the main, uh, park, city park. And, um, a very active community center with a, a really, really good, uh, parks and recreation, um, director. That's, uh, uh, keeping things rolling, so this city is growing a lot. And how we. And how we guide it makes a big difference. Um, and, um. I know for me, it's, my grandchildren are in Southern California now and. One daughter's in Boise and one daughter's off in Southern California, so my family's probably gonna. Not be around in Thurston County so long, um, but they definitely have roots here. Uh, and, um, and had a, a very good, um. It's, it's really good to have kids and grow up here for them. I never know, anyway, I'm back on. I forgot how many years, fifteen years on and now I'm back on again.
Uh, let's see, John Graver, uh, came to Yelm in eighty-four. I also do not live in Yelm, but if I cross my river and back, I am in Yelm. Uh, been forty-eight years in the real estate industry, I'm a part owner of, uh, Windermere Real Estate, um. Part of coming into this, actually, the very first thing I got into with the city was the sign ordinance committee. Um, and that was. A while ago, yeah, so anyway, um, uh, but, um, my father was a. Firm believer in giving back, always give back, be involved, give back. And so I joined lots of different things and, um, and I, and I really enjoy, um. Putting my time forward and I think I have a lot of experience, you know, to be able to help with things like the planning commission. That's about it.
Oh, in case you're wondering, I'm retired, oh, Richard, sorry.
Yeah, I'm right here. Hey, Carlos, I'm still here. Well, tha- thanks to Gary, I'm, I'm here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm Rich Lumsdale, I'm, uh, retired twenty-six years Army, moved to Yelm, uh, two thousand and ten. Daughter, uh, graduated from Yelm High School, I've been on the planning commission since, uh, December of twenty-two. So little over a year. Um, I'm doing some advanced classes on sustainability and regional and compute, community planning. Uh, that's kinda what I do in my spare time. Uh, you all aren't gonna see me for a while, cause I'm currently in DC working at the Pentagon. So I'll be here for a little bit, but as long as, uh, I own my house and. Keep my wife there and in town, then I'm, I'm good to go with the commission, so, um, that's it, then that's all for me.
Uh, thank you, Richard, in case you're wondering, I had a business here, that's one of the reasons I joined the planning commission. That was, I had a business for about nine years and retired. All right, that being the case, um, do I have a motion to. Close the meeting at this four forty-three?
Anything else would you care to make, sir?
Well, I'm considering retiring from the planning commission.
Dragged you back?
It's, uh. But, you know, it's time for the newer people to come in, younger people, and they give them an opportunity to. Contribute to the city, I love this city, this town is a great town. And, uh, yeah, so I'll talk to Gary about it, see.
I hope you can make at least one more meeting, so we can.
Well, I can, I, you know, I, I think my term is up in December.
Yeah, I think you have to, I think the law states. If you're the chairman, you have to fulfill your obligation.
All right, uh, that being the case, it's four fifty-three and I'm closing the meeting, do I hear a motion to close the meeting?
Thank you, provide a motion to close the meeting at four fifty-three.
The motion has been passed, this meeting is adjourned. All right, I have a vote to close the meeting, all in favor, say yea. All opposed, not opposed, meeting is adjourned.
Gary, thank you.